To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item we got this morning is the public hearing for the assessor's office. That will turn it over, Brian, do you have anything?
Um, yeah, we sent to you.
First, okay, we'll start out with approval agenda. All in favor, our new motion in a second.
So move. Supervisors, move.
Give me a second.
Second.
Okay, Adam, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, most curious. That will go with the approval of the minutes from the February ninth meeting. Need a motion there? Okay, Adam, need a second.
Supervisor, second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, most curious. Okay, with that, we'll turn it over to you, Brian.
All right, um, let's start off, first off on the list, I know you guys, we mentioned in the last meeting, um, I brought the, the letter from the state, that you guys needed a copy of, um, from the, uh, Terry Hepock, right, the original. That letter described everything, it was up to date at that time.
Yeah, we did question, ask about that, and, uh, you gave us this information, I appreciate you bringing in the written confirmation.
Mm-hmm.
Sounds like everything's on schedule, so we appreciate that.
Yep.
I was surprised that he's been here three times, so you go down there quite a little bit, too, but he comes out here as well.
He needed to come here because we did a lot of the work, we had to go out and do actual field work here, and training here for certain items, then also stuff on, on the computer as well.
Good. Yeah, seems like everything's in order.
Then with that, uh, also, and, also we gave you guys a revised, of my budget there for, throws out calculation error on the salary, adjusted down to that, since the gene of birth.
Right. The date thing.
Start date.
Yeah.
That's good for you.
Everything else is the same, Brian?
Yep, nothing else has changed. And then also, I, uh, I know Mark asked about some extra arrows for some of my line items that were increasing, um, so I took the liberty here to put together a little bit where you see why they were increasing, give you some ideas. As you can see, some of them, I wasn't even increasing up to what my over, over expenditures were, but I was just trying to get everything to balance a little bit better, um, in the end. So you can see, we had about over ten thousand dollar plus from what the budget was figured, um, but with my, when I moved up, and my line items, just trying to get, get the balance in the end, because with my budget, at least I can kind of roll from one to the other to get to work. So if I'm over on one, I easily got a little bit left, and another one to help it balance out, so. I know you asked about that, Mark, hope that helps out a little bit.
Yeah.
Other than that, that's about all I've really, really had.
Do you have any written comments or any comments on your budget so far?
Nope.
Any other questions or comments regarding the budget? Virginia?
I do have a question, um, how many hours is the part-time?
It's, it's especially very, it's usually this fall work, and we're out doing the field work in the fall, so it depends on how much work there is, usually it's going throughout the entire county, it's what she helps us out every year.
Does qualify for health insurance? If, if it's all involved, is it more than what nineteen hours, if you tell me? Or insurance kicks in?
It's twenty-one for the county.
Twenty-one?
Mm-hmm.
They have to be permanent part-time?
Yeah, she's not permanent part, she's just as needed.
I'd call her more seasonal? Seasonal.
Yeah.
Well, I, I wasn't sure if, if you had a few weeks that if you had forty hours a week or over, um, that it kicks in that the, we have, we have health insurance. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Now, we need to close the public hearing. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and then we need to approve one for the budget. Need a motion to approve the budget?
I'll make. I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion and a second to approve the Carroll County Assessor's budget for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, most curious. Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Boy, the way he laid everything out, he had questions, he actually brought more than we asked for.
Sure.
Appreciate that.
Courtney?
Okay, well then, we'll start up with the, uh, board meeting. Got any, any additions or corrections to the agenda for today?
No.
Seconded. Got a motion and a second to approve the agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, with that, we'll go down to approval of the minutes from last week's meeting.
Just a small typo on the minutes. About the fourth paragraph said the, uh, we approved, uh, for six thousand tons, it says six thousand dollars above the times.
Okay, we'll get that changed.
Mark, doesn't apply.
You gotcha.
Applies everywhere else.
Sorry to be a pest, but I found a second one.
Okay, that's, that's fine, it's not pesty. I'd rather have them found now before we put them in.
It's, it's under the SOC Rail fundraising committee, and, uh, the third to last line where it says not to exceed eighteen month loan from, I think I should say from the local option sales tax instead of form.
Oh, yep.
Read right over that.
Okay, anything else?
Close to your corrections, I'll move to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, most curious. First item on the agenda is the animal rescue care budget follow-up. Kathy?
Hi Kathy.
Hey, Brett, um, this is our proposed budget, uh, this would be after we've had the shelters. Just wanted to follow up, you may have requested that. And this is just events that we have now, of what we bring in for donations. Since we, since we started in two thousand six, we have always met our budget, every year, we've never not paid anything, we've always, um, been able to pay our bills, so we've always been successful each year with our budget. Just wanted to say thanks for your consideration, and hopefully maybe down the line you'll consider us again. Any questions for me?
So you're showing here you have no expenses on your shelters at this point?
This would be proposed with the new shelter. We're, we're wanting to pay for it entirely before we build it. And we're, we're closing in on three hundred thousand in pledges at the moment.
Have you got anything as far as firm bids of, to build the actual structure?
We are in the process of that right now.
Okay.
Kathy, it shows eighteen thousand dollars worth of annual donations, is that fairly accurate to what it's been the past several years?
Yeah, yeah.
You bring in eighteen thousand worth of just cash donations per year?
Yes.
Splendid.
We do a, you know, between, you know, the events for the donations, we have a year-end mailing, we have a year-end mailing, um, that brings in quite a bit, and then throughout the year, we do other things, but yeah, we do. Adoptions are part of that, too, um, we, we charge an adoption fee every time we adopt an animal out, so that's quite a bit, too.
Do you let that open to the adopt door, or do you say at a minimum it's got to be?
Yeah, we establish a minimum.
And then what is that?
Seventy-five for cats and?
Two hundred for dogs.
Yeah, that's what I thought you said.
And it's the same for everybody, with the exception of, um, if we have a special sale.
Like right now, we've got a special on cats, because we've got over a hundred cats.
Because we've got way many cats, and, in order to... We still go through the same process of checking applications and everything, but we do, we do surprise a little.
Basically, those people just to cover the shots and all that.
Yeah, because we say, we get all their shots, they're microchipped, they're spare, neutered, we make sure of all that before they go out.
So what if you don't get them moved, what happens then?
We keep them.
You just keep them?
We're, we're not a care shelter. The only time we put an animal down is if, um, they're, they're deemed to be dangerous, or they're illness, or something like that, otherwise we keep them.
We have had two particular cats that came through that situation in Glidden. We've had them fifteen months now. And we will keep them until somewhere besides it goes.
Oh, we have also worked with animal rescue that are deployed, too. Sometimes if we have a, say a dog that doesn't get adopted fast enough, we'll work with them, or we'll do a trade with them, because maybe they can adopt the dogs faster.
We did that with, uh, a Basset Hound and a Dalmatian. We traded them, the Basset for the Dalmatian, the Basset got adopted within a week, and the Dalmatian within two weeks. And they've had, we've had one for a long time, and they've had one for a long time, so we just found the right people.
Sure.
I noticed you have Hoopit up on here.
Yeah, that was just this weekend.
Yeah.
We've been doing that for a period.
Instead of four hundred, we made nine hundred.
Good, good. Yeah, keep scoring.
Kathy, I, I thought during your first presentation, you were going to have a full-time personnel out there, but has that changed since then? Or did I misunderstand?
We proposed a part-time.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you'll just pay them a stipend and no benefits or insurance or anything like that?
Yeah, basically just to kind of handle some paperwork and maybe be there on, on the weekends when we see the most adoptions done, that it could be open for people to come in.
We will still be using our volunteer base for a long time.
Well, thank you for your consideration.
Thanks again. Thanks for coming back.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, we'll go down to the second item on the agenda, just to approve the plat and the packet.
You should be familiar with this one, Marty, getting more neighbors.
Guess what we need on that road?
I wouldn't dream of it.
Just the plats in your packet.
That's for me notes, the first time around, right?
Yeah. I wouldn't dream of that.
Plats in section three of Pleasant Valley, basically three parcels.
Is there a house going out there right now, close to this?
Just north of there, about two lots.
Okay, I thought I saw a house out there.
And then this one's going to be a little hog cabin.
Neighbors of yours.
Yeah.
So this would be pretty, pretty close to his acreage, right?
It'd be right on the north side of his acreage. There's three lots in between, between the house that's there and his acreage, so it's basically filling in that gap.
Two were already there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's two north, actually three north of there, there's a new one going up north of it.
Oh, okay. So that'll be the three.
That's going to be the four.
Oh, okay.
That kind of row is lying in there correctly, Marty? Is that how it is?
Let's see.
Your back forty there.
Actually, yeah, this would be the first lot where the new house is, this would be baitings, this would be Trent Chandler's, and then these three lots would be in all the way.
Okay, so there's a house there now?
There's a house.
Okay.
Well, there's a new house being built.
Actually, there's two new lots being built in there.
Yeah, this is the new house, this is the first one.
Okay. I saw those.
And then these three lots are right in between him, here, and there's just a easement in between this place and the three new lots.
So those are the three then?
Yep.
Okay.
I see he's going around the backside of one just to get that five acre square.
He's going deeper with these lots than the original ones.
Yeah.
Narrowing them up.
They have to have, be a minimum of five acres?
Mm-hmm.
That's what I thought.
There'll be another one in about two or three weeks, there'll be another one just south of there.
Another plant?
Yeah. Didn't sold, but he'll hug our needs, but now we sold these off, and in the process of that, another one.
That's what we need, no far as I'm concerned.
I, I, was there any issues on the plat?
No, I, I see no.
I didn't either.
Any of the issues.
I'll, I'll move to approve the plat.
Got a motion and a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion and a second to approve the plat, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, third item is the barnyard gift and greenhouse, class B native wine permit.
I don't, I'm not aware of any other issues there, any concerns, so.
Lot of, lot of wild parties over there, I'll tell you that.
Ted Denny Wild is a neighborhood that's already there, Dean.
Keep up with the neighbors there.
Just to walk home.
Yeah, I get it, just to walk home. If there are no, uh, concerns, I would move to approve that permit.
I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion and a second to approve the native wine, class B native wine permit, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Stand this one?
Yes, please.
Stay up there, Neil, change that. Should we get the right eight on there? You wouldn't want to not, not get a food, that way you can't walk.
I do a lot of walking around my neighborhood out there to... Socialize.
So we're sporting wildlife.
Yeah.
Wine permit, you walk over, you stumble back.
All he's got to do is when he goes outdoors, he's got to say east or north.
East or north? No, my way. Jungle's usually east, and I usually go north. We take care of all the...
Spread the business around a little bit.
Spread the business around.
Well, then I usually walk, yeah, sometimes we come home different ways, just to get something to conversation. Make sure it's ready. Gene, Gene, he can do that. Hope that somebody else got the boot in, got their finger.
Yeah.
I could never figure that thing out.
I can figure it out, it's just that the one wheel slips on it. That's what, get it going back and forth.
You know, I say this world's getting, you know, wild, they must spend a weekend with their granddaughter out in Omaha.
There we go.
Saturday, went to a movie.
There we go.
I don't know how they expect people like this to stay away from you.
At least we got a tomorrow.
Is that real?
Oh. You're kidding me. I've heard of those, but I can't remember the last time I went to a movie.
Needless to say, my wife's through it, it's my night for me.
It's my wife wanted to go to a movie yesterday, and said, "That's the one that gets worse for me for a good now." Okay, well, item number four is the ambulance initial union agreement.
Sure, I'll take this, I'll pass it around, um, met with, uh, follow back up with Ken Belt, uh, just kind of answered some questions about the insurance, about language that would be in there, and assured him that it would be consistent with, uh, language that's included in the others. Essentially, what this will be is negotiated just on wages. Wages, it's a three-year deal, wages will be two point five percent for fiscal year sixteen, two point six for seventeen, and two point seven for eighteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. And then this will also include a fifteen cent, uh, raise on the CCP eligible paramedics. There are five, and soon to be six, paramedics that'll have CCP status. And then the other item on there was, we wanted to leave the insurance open on years two and three, and we'll have an insurance discussion here shortly, but we just want to make sure that we've got that option, to be able to reopen, uh, that agreement, should our premiums increase by more than ten percent. So again, that's two five, two six, two seven, CCPs will have an additional fifteen cents, and, um, insurance remains open on year two and three.
And for the people that don't understand CCP, that's critical care patient, uh, care.
Okay.
Some of their major transports, when they have a particularly, uh, on a ventilator, they need to have that in order to transport, otherwise we lose those transports, so that's the reason for it.
That was an additional?
Over and above the two five, two six, two seven. All, all staff will get, all staff will get the two five, two six, two seven.
Right.
And then the CCPs only will get an additional fifteen cents.
Fifteen cents, okay.
And that's per duty hour, uh, that won't be a second or third call, and, um, overtime, of course, would apply to the duty time, but can't be avoided. So, um, unless there's any other questions, I would go make a, I'd make a motion to approve the, uh, initial agreement with the ambulance, and wait.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Don't need to sign off on that one.
Um, this, yeah, you can't, um, yeah, why don't you, this is, again, that's just the tentative, but, um...
Renee will have to...
Yeah, well, I've actually done that already, I've done that, because Renee was excluded from this. And I've, I've got them a contract for them to review, and hopefully we'll have it back by next week. So...
Okay, with that, we'll go down to number five, is the conservation initial union agreement.
Yes, we don't have any initial agreement in writing, it was all done via email, Renee did handle this one, um, as you know, we were seeking a three-year deal with them also. Uh, it turned out to be that we gave them the option to do just a one-year, and due to some staffing issues out there, they have some concerns that they want to be addressed, and so they have made an agreement to do a one-year deal at the two and a half percent. Uh, the insurance language does not change in their case. So again, it's just two point five percent for a one-year deal.
I'll make a motion that we set that tentative.
And I'll second that.
Okay, you got a motion and a second on the tentative initial union agreement for the conservation board, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
And she does have a contract out to them.
Okay, so we just wait for that to...
Yep.
And we have a contract out to the sheriff's, too, also.
Yep.
So we've basically got, so the basis covering.
Okay?
Ray?
I would love that in a three-year deal.
On?
On the conservation, would've been nice to have that, but...
Once that's closer, yes.
Is that unusual?
Um, no, conservation is just coming off of a three-year, uh, secondary roads has one year remaining on a three-year, um, and I think years ago, we had three years with the other units, but this is the first one in my tenure with ambulance, and also the first one in my tenure with the sheriff, so...
It's a lot easier to get three years.
Sure.
We have some conservation board for next year, if we can do a two-year and just get it back in rotation, and get them all on the same page.
You just couldn't convince them to go three years.
Right.
Okay, so we'll go down to the next item, is the manure management annual updates, we've got two of those today. Uh, the first one is Janes Galen, the Pine Ridge Pork in section thirty of Roselle Township, that one, there are no changes. And the second one is First Age Farms of Iowa LLC, PI two thirty-five finisher, and that's in section five of Wheatland Township, uh, that one, there's changes to the crop rotation, and they're doing manure analysis. So those are the manure management plans for today. And I just hand those back down quickly. Okay, with that, we'll go down to item number seven, and that's the insurance discussion.
I had asked for this to be on the agenda today. We heard from Wellmark last week, and, um, we're at a point of needing some discussion about what we're going to do, you know, we, we all, uh, talked rather firmly last year, sorry, uh, all four of us talked pretty firmly last year, that we've got to do something. And, uh, we know we've put together an insurance committee, which I think has been beneficial, you know, being able to, at the very least, have open dialogue with the, uh, employees, and of course beneficiaries of the, uh, of the health insurance agreement. We've made, uh, I believe, four recommendations to the board, uh, coming from the insurance committee. That certainly doesn't mean that we're limited to just those four considerations, but, um, we're, we're going to be getting our final rates in about thirty days, and we certainly have to have that, I think, inked by sixty days from now, and so if we're going to look into other options here, uh, we, we certainly need to be making some decisions here rather shortly. Courtney and I have been in conversation with yet another broker, uh, Cottington and Bayer?
Butler.
Butler, another very reputable firm, um, with local connections, local ties here. Once again, they're making, uh, extending offers to us that would include a whole lot of HR consulting at additional costs and so on, and I've replied that I personally am, I'm not interested in taking on a whole lot more expense, we, I, I don't think he was aware that we have an HR consultant on contract. But, um, he's not promising that he can find us some cost savings in our premiums, but he did give us a recent example of a municipality, uh, that under the terms of their agreement, that they were able to reduce their, their premiums by thirty percent. So, I just, um, I mean, if you certainly want me to continue to champion this, I, I need some direction from you. I think Courtney is, you know, willing to be at my side every step that we, we take, um, you know, we're, we're willing to, uh, you know, go the distance here and to try and find some answers on how to reduce our premiums here, but we need some direction from the board on what you would like us to do.
I had some discussion at our last Westfield Board meeting, we have Holmes Market, we did switch over to them for about a year ago, and, uh, just talking with Clay Adams there, we've got about sixty-five employees on, on board there with the health insurance, and he said the savings that we ended up with over there, we had Wellmark with Cross wood shield also prior to, and what we ended up with there is about forty thousand dollar savings, and one of the comments that he made as far as the HR, they were very helpful on the HR side, so I mean, they've gone up above and beyond in a lot of things that we did with Wellmark prior to.
What would the cost be for, uh, one of these insurance brokers to check it out?
Well, we would, uh, we need to put it on RFP, in, in order to, um, you know, we, we first have to decide what, what's the scope of services we're looking for, I mean, whether it's just going to be straight insurance brokering, or whether or not it's going to include HR consulting and things of that nature, the cost is going to go up as you expand services. But say for an example, if we're looking, you know, solely at, at brokering the insurance, I think, uh, an estimate was given to us by one of them at approximate... at approximately $10,000. But again, there's no assurance they're going to reduce our premiums. There's belief that they're going to reduce our rates and premiums, but, you know, once again, there's, it's, it's always been a concern that once we go back out and revisit this and re, you know, ask for new quotes, that perhaps it's a low-ball situation and, you know, it's just a one-year deal. I, I personally don't share that concern. I, I really don't. And if, if that is the situation, we just go out and put it out for quote again. But I just don't know if I'm the only one that feels that way.
Well, I agree that at this point, I think we're only in interest, or I'm only interested in looking into the insurance and not the other array of services. And these people are in business that are going to try to upsell every chance they get, so that doesn't surprise me. And then, of course, when they show you where they saved a municipality 30%, they're, they're cherry picking there and they're showing you the best probably, best results they've ever had probably. So that's why I was concerned about the cost. And, and the other question I have is how about the timing? If we would call one of these agencies today and engage with them, when could they have us a recommendation?
They both thought that they could act relatively quickly on it. He was seeking, the second one was seeking some planned details from us already so he could start getting some of that put together. I didn't reply back to that. I don't, I doubt you did too. But that would be fairly quick to be able to turn that back around.
What is fairly quick? A month, a week?
Um, he...
I've lost.
He used the term quick. So...
A relative.
Well, he knows, he knows we, he, in time for our renewal.
Okay.
Because I asked that question.
Yeah. You started, starting up here in March on your second, second year.
Still a new customer, is it?
Yeah, yeah. You were Holmes Murphy, they're basically the broker.
Cut the reins down.
Yeah, yep.
And you visit with two of these different brokers. Were they both about $10,000 on the cost?
I don't remember getting a cost from Cottingham Butler.
Yeah, me neither.
And, you know, the Holmes Murphy representative said that that was not a set price. He was pretty adamant that they would be competitive if they were other bids. So I think we're going to do something better and make sure we have as many as we can get, I suppose. I don't know how many, I mean, those are probably the only two I know of in the state that are big. I mean, otherwise you'd be looking at a smaller, smaller agent or smaller broker.
I think, you know, putting together an RFP would be fairly simple. I mean, it could just be a paragraph or so, you know, what our scope of services we're requesting from them. And, you know, perhaps if John needs to draw that up, fine, but I think turnaround on that would be fairly quick. We could even ask both of them for a sample RFP if, you know, something that they've, you know, dealt with before, something that they would be comfortable with. We would have to, as a board, decide whether or not we want to extend this RFP just to these two providers. If we want to go, you know, somewhat locally, you know, I'm, and I'm, I'm all for doing things locally, but it's my understanding a lot of these local insurance agencies work through some of these larger ones. And so that would, you know, I'm just concerned that that might just add to the cost to us.
Sure.
And again, I, my primary interest is that we reduce our costs without sacrificing benefits of services, so...
That would, that would have been my question. Where I mean, we're talking apples to apples, right?
Yes, yep.
Everybody's going to be Wellmark?
Uh, not necessarily. No, not necessarily.
You said, you said with Holmes Murphy was, was Wellmark.
But that was Wellmark in her, in their case.
I guess that would be my concern as long as the benefits and everything remain relatively the same.
Right. It would, it was explained to us in, in the first proposal that, with the Holmes proposal, is what they do is they, they go in there and they use their analytics to help drive down the expected claims.
The actuaries.
The actuaries. And, you know, say, well, you know, you really just, you're kind of overestimating what that would be. And then they come back in and they find a carrier that's willing to accept, you know, that, that reduced premium and leave our stock losses the same and everything else.
At this point, Wellmark's kind of laid their cards on the table, so to speak. We know what their expected contribution would be. So I don't know if that puts, that will, if they would recalculate that with a, after being contacted with my Holmes Murphy, if you're this Cottingham Butler, they would have that opportunity as well, wouldn't they? I'm in favor of moving forward and getting a quote from at least these two firms. We're still not committed. And if they have a reasonable rate and, and we also, they also need to give us a firm finish date so we get their quote or their suggestion back in time. So there's, there's got to be a deadline on this.
And that's up to them. You know, if they don't get to meet the deadline, they're not...
And by having more than one firm, of course, that, that could help us get the Holmes Murphy estimate down to as well. They're not going to budge you if they don't have to.
Sure.
I don't want to get the cart in front of the horse, but I just, I want to kind of be, my motto's always been to, to cross that bridge before we get to it. If this would happen, and I'm with you, I would like to thank you for my, your support in this, I'd like to do that too. But if we get to that point where we're going to have to change insurance companies and there is a savings, now, I'm not going to predict whether the savings would be a dollar or whether it'll be 30%, but is this board open to changing insurance companies? Because if we're not, let's just have that discussion now. Because if we're not, we're wasting everybody's time.
Sure.
Well, I'm certainly very happy with the service Wellmark has provided. And so if it's a dollar, no, no, we're not going to change. I wouldn't want to change, I guess. But if it is significant, say a 10 or 15% savings and the product we get is as good, I would be in favor of it. They don't own us and we paid our premiums. We're, we're even with them. They provide service, we pay for it. They don't owe us, we don't owe them. It was kind of a pay-as-you-go thing. The one thing I am concerned about is if Holmes Murphy or Cottingham Butler, either one comes back with a different insurance company, says, "We will save you money. Your benefits are going to be shifted." This is what I can see happening, say, well, this group of people, under these circumstances, are going to have better benefits and this group maybe not quite so good. There'll be a change of benefits to the overall benefit of this. That's where I'm going to have a tough time making a decision because then we're going to say, okay, all you people who are on maybe prescription medicine are going to have lesser benefits, but you people who are whatever, having surgery are going to have better benefits, you know. And there, there could be a shift in benefits with different companies. Is that very possible?
Well, if, once again, it was my understanding that we could bid the exact same coverage.
Apples to apples.
Yep, scope, scope of benefits, I think, is what they referred to. It was my understanding that it, it might, but without changing plan design, they're well aware of the, the unions. They're well aware that any changes in that certainly has to, you know, cross the union's approval. And before we get down to any path on down the road of, of changing insurance coverages or the participation, I think it needs to be the unions that drive that decision. I think it needs to be, you know, they need, would need to embrace, you know, say for an example, I'm just going to pick something that, you know, we would cover the, the employee and not, you know, I think 100% and then do a lesser percentage on other. I think it needs to be led, that needs to be driven by the, the unions. Because I, for one, wouldn't be willing to impose that on our non-union labor and then wait two to three years to negotiate that with a 50/50 chance of winning that if you had to arbitrate it. I think it needs to begin with the unions. But it was my understanding that we could duplicate, and that's, that's what a broker does. I'm just a car salesman here. I don't do this for a living, but they, they do this. And so they, that's why he was asking for that information and take a look at our current plan. And then they would do their best to match it up. And it's just like any other bid, an RFP, is they would have to put out exemptions to where we don't match up.
I guess I'm up to three things on the list, of course, the cost, the timing, do we get the recommendation back? And the third, that's a mirror image of the insurance we know how.
Yeah. And Neil, I'm like you. If, if it's a dollar savings, I, I'm not, I'm going to, I spill that more on a Friday night, so... But if, but, but the number I kind of wanted to hear you say was, I think you said 10, maybe even 15%. And I'm not going to hold you to it, I understand that, but...
That was just an impromptu example.
Yep, I get that. And I'm not going to hold you to it. But, but, but if there is some realized savings to be had, then is the board willing to make a change?
From what I've seen with Holmes Murphy on the Westco side, if it's a significant change like that, I can live with it. I'd like, like you, for a dollar, we can't do it. But if there's a significant change, then I think it's, and like I said, if you're, if you're dealing with Wellmark with CrossFit Shield, you're in the same, like, you're comparing apples to apples. And that's, and from what we went through with Westco, I mean, we're just going into our second year. And, and one of the things that somebody cautioned me, the provider that we had prior to, well, they'll work with you for the first two or three years and they'll jump the rates. So far, in the second year, we haven't seen that. And so I, I'm very pleased with what they've done for us so far. So I mean, if there's a savings like that, it's, that's significant.
They haven't jumped the rates. Has your claim history jumped?
It went, it changed a little bit, but not, not much.
Because that would be your driver.
Yeah. That's the other thing that, you know, there's a lot of variables in that thing. I mean, you can't guarantee, those claims are going to dictate what the hell those rates do. But all we can do is put the proposal out there and it's based on our, our current claims.
And we've certainly had the claims experience. I mean, that does not lie. I just met another employee on the way in here today that just had surgery on his shoulder. So, I mean, they're, they're going to continue. He asked something about trends in there too. I mean, the, the aging of our population and so on. But I think we have a younger population today than what we had three years ago.
Oh, I agree with that.
Secondary Roads, that's one grand example.
The thing is, they're only going to do, if policy we have, they're only going to be able to deal with so many companies. That's probably going to be two.
I think it's going to be three.
Three. He's, he said three.
Who would be the other?
United Healthcare was the second one and...
Coventry.
Coventry, thank you. Attaboy.
You know, if, if the benefits are all the same, I, I'm like Neil, I, I'd be willing to take a look at it. If there's an extreme savings.
Yeah.
But I don't want to have, switch into some different things and having less benefits myself. Because I don't think that's where...
You don't want to create any issues.
That's right.
If you're, if you're, if the, you know, if the horse is going down the path right now, you don't want to...
Pull the reins.
Yeah, you don't want to pull the reins and end at the ditch.
Yep. If there could be significant changes, that would be a shift in benefits, I don't think we could instigate that right away. It'd have to be almost a mirror image of insurance we have now.
I think so.
To, to do the change at this point.
Our insurance, or our, our, our union agreements that we are just approving the initials and what we're going to have an ink, it, it states the 750, 1500. It states what that is. So the only, if we make any kind of change, we would still have to go back to the unions with it. But if it matches it and we can clearly demonstrate that it does, I don't think they're going to have a problem with that.
Better price of what you call HMO or whatever we said what we got, then that's another issue too.
Well, yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, and you don't have any stipulations anymore?
Well, just to get to the bottom of Mark's conversation or his request, maybe can this board agree to have a couple, at least these two insurance brokers, see what they have to offer? And they need to offer a price. They have to have a sort of a mirror image of the insurance we have now. And they have, they will have a deadline they need to. With those stipulations going ahead?
I would agree to those.
Yeah, I'd agree to that.
Yeah. The biggest thing, my concern is that, you know, if we change insurance companies, the employees don't even notice the difference. That would be the best of all worlds. And if we could get savings out of that, significant savings, I'm all for that.
Do we, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if we need a consensus or motion on that. I'll let you charge that.
I would say at this point, if we just have a consensus. So I had a quick Ethan, Courtney, or do we want to go?
Are we going to do an RFP?
Yeah.
Going to do an RFP.
But, but maybe, we don't know what that RFP is going to look like. Let's maybe construct the RFP and then vote on the RFP. Does that make sense?
Do that next week. Is that going to be soon enough?
Mm-hmm, I think so.
All right. Is that, is there enough? That's my thing.
Refresh my memory, what was the other suggestions your committee was talking about?
Yeah, with the four, again, remind me.
What would have a real health program?
Yeah, wellness program.
Wellness program.
Which, we have a volunteer for that.
And, you know, I was looking at our budget and, you know, the county contributes $1,500 to our wellness committee. And it used to be, back in the day, that was, you know, they got the blood draw going and they got some other things going, maybe 10, 15 years ago, I'm guessing. And anymore, that, there really isn't anything, you know. So we're funding it. It'd be nice to maybe do some more things on the wellness side. But Joanne used to be in charge of that. And I think what happened was Doppus got busy and she didn't have time to be funding it. So majority of that funding is used for Christmas party. And, you know, we do the, the poker, or I don't know if it's a poker room, but then we make people do the stairs, you know, to at least, at least have something. But I'd like to see more of...
More activity there.
We're going to contribute money to that. I think it should be more wellness.
Yep.
I haven't looked. Wellmark said on their site, their website, they have some examples of what we could or should be doing for a wellness program. I haven't checked it out yet.
Theirs was more of a, a menu selection. You could pick and choose what you wanted to include in your wellness program.
Certainly have some ideas there.
Again, shop, shop around with or without the use of a broker. So that's two, with or without the use. Look into a health savings account as an option only. And that would be perhaps used as an incentive for a spouse to go elsewhere. And then the third was, or the fourth was the wellness program.
I only got three.
Well, shop with or without a, a use of a broker.
Oh, okay.
The wellness program and a health savings account?
Yes.
So you're saying that shop around or with or without, that's two options.
Right, yeah. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Virginia, your comment?
I have a question, how many people were on this committee? And was there anybody that was specifically representing the taxpayers?
I think I do that.
No other interest in being, uh?
Yeah, I, I think I do a pretty admirable job speaking on behalf of the taxpayers.
Cause they're all taxpayers.
And, um.
Well, there's more of them that are not working for the county than there are that work for the county.
If you're asking, did we have someone from the outside, not an employee, the answer is no.
How many is on the committee?
Uh, I believe there was seven of us, we had, uh, one from each union, one of those served a dual role. And then we had one from each represented plan, and Courtney and myself.
With the goal to.
Make recommendations to the board.
Make recommendations to the board.
And actually, you had a non-county person involved too.
Well, yeah, we did, yeah. It was a union representative, but he, he contributed rather well, I thought.
But he's from outside the county and he, uh, some of the stuff that he suggested, I guess, I'd give it to him.
Well, I think everybody's overall goal, goal was to lower the cost.
Yeah.
I mean, which would benefit the taxpayers.
Sure.
And that's why we were meeting.
Yeah.
Yep. So what do you see it as the next step, based on what we agreed to today?
Probably prepare an RFP.
Okay.
And approve it to be released.
By Monday?
Did you say you had somebody that was willing to take over the wellness program or what?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Angela Chandler has, was a member of the insurance committee, and she just stepped forward and she goes, I'd be glad to chair that.
Great.
And again, you gotta remember, a wellness program isn't going to impact your rates today. It's not gonna impact this.
No, long term.
But long term, you would think that it would.
It's just a good thing.
Yeah, I think so.
That will move forward, and talk about it, any, or any other questions or comments? Talk about it again next Monday with the RFPs, but, uh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, we've got a gentleman here that walked in, do you have a concern or comment today?
Can I interrupt this for a minute?
Yes, yeah. We're leaving.
No, I can't, you're with you fellow.
Okay, I just ask, ask what your concerns.
Anyway, I'm a fan of the animal rescue league.
Okay.
And I adopted two dogs in my time, and I had to get them both out of Ankeny. Now they had a dog down there, it's a 15-year-old terrier, and I'm a foster parent for that one. And these gals that are taking over this animal rescue league, you know, it's all volunteer. And, uh, I'd just like to see if you fellas could, be in your heart to help them out a little bit. Now, again, with these adopted dogs, in my neighborhood, there's four of us, and we all walk our dogs. And I'll tell you what, we're all getting pretty close to pushing that 90 mark. There's, uh, and I don't know them walks, them dogs, they motivate me to take a walk. Wouldn't be for my dog, I could sit in that recliner and turn on Gunshoe or something to that effect. But, uh, I'm just, I, I mean, I don't know if they've, I just read in the paper that they were gonna be down here today, so I thought I'd come down here. And have you people decided on anything that you're, or give us some serious thought?
We talked about it in the initial proposal, they, the gals, Kathy Stepis and.
What's your what?
Karen Schouten.
Karen Schouten. Karen Schouten and Kathy Stepis, they were here earlier this morning, and they kinda gave us an overview. That was right at nine o'clock, it was the first item on the agenda, and that's where it is at this point. We had, we talked about it here, what was that, two weeks ago? And.
Well, the thing about it is, you'll do be a lot of, a lot of dogs brought in from around the country. And, uh, I'd hate to see, I had my dogs pre-mated, I'd hate to see them go back to the old days, what they used to do with dogs. I've got a lot of sympathy for them. Do the best you can, fellas, I'd, these gals are working hard, volunteering, don't just pay nothing.
Okay.
And that's my story for today.
Okay, I'd like, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Happy. Kathy Yokos. Works down on Eighth or Ninth Street.
In the apartment?
Yeah, she's got two cars.
Well, um, that's his nickname.
What's his first name?
I'm trying to think of what his first name.
Arlo.
Arlo.
Arlo, yeah. He used to work out, he used to work out at Farmers.
Yeah.
You know, it's kinda interesting, cause I've had some discussion with some peoples, and this is something I don't think it's gonna happen this year, but I think if we're down the road, maybe we need to talk to, maybe Doug, you know, he puts $750 in there, and maybe do something on, from that avenue, but I wanna talk to Doug before we do anything with it, and I don't think we need to do it this year, but if somebody brought that to my attention, that, that might be an avenue to fund it just a little bit, use that money, that's out of the sheriff's budget. So, that's kinda where I, I wanna talk to Doug before we do anything with it. Like I said, I don't think we need to do anything this year with it, I think we're just gonna go from there.
Those, I had some people talk to me about it, and they supported our decision.
Yeah, I had support of our decision.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I've heard.
Yeah.
By a huge margin, actually.
Yeah, I have yet to.
I concur.
Public safety is more of our charge in this board than what it is for the pets. Okay, with that, we'll go down to committee reports, Mark, you can start off.
Sure. On Thursday, uh, the Library Steering Committee met, and a three-hour meeting. And, uh, what we did is we went to a, there's been lots of space needs study, and this was another one that is put together by the Connecticut State Library, which has been a nationwide leading authority on putting together space needs and assessments. And in doing so, we had a representative from the state of Iowa State Library, um, not association, but the actual state library, was here and, um, had explained, you know, within the last 10 or so years of the new libraries in and around, what, in, around Iowa, what, what they've had in them, that the, uh, there's, there's a changing need in libraries, that they're not just solely for checking out books. And she put on a presentation, we also did a, tried to do a comparison as where the city of Carroll is in terms of population and size and funding and a lot of different metrics to, uh, help determine space needs. And then we ended up filling out this worksheet, and the worksheet, um, included current needs, future needs, and so on. And the number that this exercise determined is, the space would be approximately 14,000 square feet, uh, for the city of Carroll Library. We currently have about 9,500 square feet there of usable space. So, if this number sticks, that means that there's gonna need to be an expansion, you know, of the existing site. So, that means a wall or two would have to be moved in order to accomplish that. Very lengthy meeting, as I said, and, uh, you know, again, very professional, these, these guys do a nice job orchestrating a meeting and keeping the, the group on task. They collected all of this data and the feedback of the committee, and we are going to meet again on March, four weeks from now, March 28th, I think, 21st, yeah. And, um, that'll be the third, uh, meeting for this library committee. Um, any questions on that?
Did they talk about bringing that to a vote?
Yeah, the, the whole purpose of this is, is to make a recommendation to the city council. Our charge, once again, is to either, to, to make a recommendation to whether expand the current site or just renovate the current site. Yeah, I'm not making any predictions right now, but this space needs study just showed that it would likely include an expansion of the current site, if, if that stays that way. There is, um, and then the recommendation would go to the city council, and then the city council would place that on a fall referendum, is most likely.
Do you think they'd put that with their city election?
I believe so.
That would be nice.
Yep, I believe so.
Good luck with that.
That's not their MO, their MO is to keep city issues completely separate.
Yeah, and they.
But in this case, I think that it will.
Yeah, that would, it would be a cost savings.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. Uh, Friday, I met with Jason Christensen of Conservation over a staff issue, and then, and I'll report back to you here shortly. And then Saturday was a legislative forum.
Um, I had a, a regional hazmat commission meeting scheduled for Wednesday that was canceled and rescheduled for Friday, and I could not attend that one because of a prior commitment. I sent an email to Peggy Sticker out up there that I would, they only meet six times a year, so, I mean, the next one's not until April. I thought, I conveyed to her that I'd probably try to slip up there sometime and get familiar with what's going on, anyway, and she appreciated that. On Wednesday, though, I did go to the, um, Capitol, and we met with Senator Sodders and, um, County, as well as, um, Robert Von Wolfstatter, I think it was, on the broadband committee. The initial dollar amount that they were talking as far as grant money was 5 million, now it's reduced to two. My concern was there, why are we even messing with something like this is, I mean, broad, takes a lot of money to, to, uh, to do anything with broadband. Uh, their situation was that there's, if you put something in place, you have an opportunity to take advantage of anything that the federal government would have coming up. So, I think, um, the way, the way it stood, um, the committee was for creating a local consortium of, of county, city, and economic development groups that would apply for grants, if there was any broadband that was deemed necessary to hit, you know, and there's, there's no way that broadband can go to everyone in the state of Iowa. It's just not phys, physically possible to do that. But there are some iss, situations, I think, extending broadband to, out here to, um, the Rendron X Road, say for instance, or to Maple River or Mount Carmel, you know. Those are feasible projects, because you're taking a broadband line to a body of people, where, as opposed to going to this farm, and to this farm, and to this farm. It just costs too much money that way. So, I think if, I think the, the, um, consensus of the, of that committee is to, you know, if you have the inputs from these different organizations, that it's easier to push to the, to the governor that way. You know, you have economic development, region, regional government as well. So I think, um, and those would be the, those would be the individuals that would apply for these grants. They wanted someone, um, and I can give you, I've got a, I've got the bill here that they're considering, but it's not actually, they're still re-massaging it and reworking it, and I think quite a bit's gonna happen this week because of funnel week. So, um, there's a, there's a possibility, I know that there's gonna be someone appointed, and this is another thing, to get somebody from ICE, from the counties, involved in the writing and developing of the grant. And so, um, I guess I was probably pointed at, to maybe possibly fill that position. So, going forward, I don't know if you guys have any questions on any of this, um, I'll be glad to answer them.
Dean, uh, what effect would this proposal for net neutrality have on this?
Nothing.
Nothing?
No, not net neutrality. Well, net neutrality is a confusing thing in itself, I'm trying to get my head around that, as it, as it would affect me as an individual. And I guess I'm not sure I understand it. I mean, in the big scope of things, you know, but I'm not, you know, I don't, do you understand it?
Well, it's, it's my understanding, of course, again, you know, I don't know how much of it is spin, how much is point, counterpoint, but it's my rudimentary understanding of it, that net neutrality is, as the name implies, is why should the north side of town have faster internet than the south side of town? And that federal regulations would now make that all equal, and it would befall the internet provider to do so. So, if what you're saying is, is, yeah, you might be willing to run it out to a housing area, but not really willing to run it out to mom pa's farm, would, it sounds to me like that there, the federal government is, particularly the Obama administration is pushing for that.
I think neutrality is a little bit different than that, though. Uh, because there are, I mean, we'll give it to anybody who wants it, as, as long as they're willing to pay for it. I mean, there still has to be a dollar amount attached to it. I think what, I think what, I, my interpretation of net neutrality is, um, is that as you get your, your phone bill right now, you have a universal service fee on there, and you have access, and you know, I think they're gonna try to, um, and I don't know how they're even gonna implement that, to be quite honest with you, but I thought it was more of a utility type of thing. They're gonna make it more of a type, more like a utility, as opposed to.
Yeah, it was my understanding that, that, it, this was the same conversation we were having about healthcare reform four years ago. I don't know how they're gonna implement that, well, they did.
Yeah, well, they haven't yet, I mean, they passed it.
And so this'll get to that point.
Yeah, and how they're gonna get there, you know, um, as far as the FCC's ruling on it, except that it passed, I'm not exactly sure if they know exactly how they're going to implement it. I don't think this, at this point, has anything to do.
There hasn't been discussions at the state level that net neutrality's gonna have any impact on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I guess I see the benefits of it this way, if there's, if there's a grant, as small as it can be, we need, and I'm saying we, this community, this Carroll County, needs to be in place to, um, take advantage of it. You know, and I think through, uh, count, through the county and Economic Development, CADC, um, they need to, uh, be able to offer, I, you know, I, I know that the Rendron X Road has wanted broadband out there. And Western Iowa Networks has tried in the past to help that situation. One, one thing that, you know, I can kinda see too, is that if we, if they could get, you know, as far as the county is concerned, you know, you could bring it past them and then somehow get it to Glidden, and that would be a good thing.
There's been discussion of that.
Yeah.
I've talked to Chuck about it.
Yeah.
Cause they were talking about going up to Rendron Works and they go down to 115th and go ahead and running that up.
Yeah.
And that kinda got put on hold, yeah.
Yeah, and the problem of putting, going around the airport and.
Yeah.
But, you know, there's Mount Carmel, there's Maple River, you know, so we can reach some of those people, but, um, it's gonna take something like this. And I think that's the way the committee's going. I think the, the other thing is, is that we do have Windstreams involved, like in Glidden and, um, CenturyLink here and MediaCom. There's concerns at any of the, how is that money also gonna be available to them? And I think that the consensus was that if we build this type of model, as far as the grant is concerned, it'll keep them out. And the money will go to local providers and do more good throughout the state, so. I'll be watching it, if anybody wants a copy of the bill, I can.
104, right, you got what that said?
Yep.
Thank you.
There's also the, there's also, this is, I was a little bit confused when I actually walked in the door, because, um, there's also a cell siding bill, it's also in the works right now. And it basically has to do with AT&amp;T.
Two different issues.
Two different things, and they're gonna keep them separate, because they definitely don't wanna pull these two together, because, so. Uh, AT&amp;T wants a cell siding bill, and it's very, "you shall", is the terminology, and I think that's the one I sent you guys, but "you shall", and it, it basically said, uh, "the counties, cities, shall do this", so it's all very one-sided, I can't imagine it getting any traction. I can't imagine it getting any traction, but you never know. Anyway, I think they've got 35 states right now, the AT&amp;Ts got in their pocket, and they're just picking them off. So, that's all I had for the week. And I went to the legislative forum.
Tuesday, had a policy council meeting. We went through the financials, it was good there. Sherry spent a lot of time talking about, one of the things that's affecting us now with the federal government is they're coming out, is they call it super circulators, and that's coming out with new regulations regarding a lot of the performances and accounting and stuff, and a lot of it is changing of words, like instead of vendor, now it's a contractor, or they're, in other words, must or should.
Or shall.
Or shall. We went through the program report, and we were probably as good as we've been for a long time as far as number of kids enrolled. We were at eight, 245 versus what the 247 that were funded for. I remember they had 30 days to fill those slots, but in the past, we've been a lot rolling that. It's been, we've had a lot of kids moving in and out. We went through the health and safety classroom playground, and they had one picnic table that got discouraged, and I took care of that issue. They were talking about self-assessment. We're not going through that right now because from use of data, it's already collected. And instead of a, a duplication of the work. One of the things that we have, the feds have been out, yeah, they used to come out with once a year, and now they come out three times a year, but they do different categories each time. So they are gonna be out here March 9th through 12th, that will be classroom inspections, and see how the kids react to the teachers, and the teachers act, react to the kids. Be part of the biggest thing. We did have a few state staff changes. We did not get a, apply for a state-funded early Head Start thing, and we did not get that, very few people did get it. But there is a new one coming up, Shared Visions with Shared Parents Program, which we're applying for, and see if we can get some more kids enrolled on that. They are starting the recruitment for the next school year. We did not, one of the things that's on the agenda was the Ursa Work Plan, and we tabled that because there's new rules coming out on that, and so we didn't have to go through that all. And that was based our meeting there. Then on Thursday, we had new opportunities, had their, I got your papers here. We had our annual meeting, and we went through that, and, I'll pass this, but, annual report we got. This, there's actually, maybe you wanna see this one, this got more difference on the numbers compared to the other years. We went through that, and I did approve that, it was a clean audit. We did also go through and approve the audit, and then we approved our indirect cost report, which is what we get our money to take care of administration and stuff, and we did approve that at 16.7% for this next coming year, and that's hardly any change from what we have in the past. We did approve a line of credit that we do every year, we haven't had to use it for a long time, but we keep it there just in case we do, particularly when these fundings like with LIHE, they shift so much, but we haven't had to use it, but we did renew that. We reviewed our property liability insurance, made no changes there. Then we, they also had an annual report that we handed out, you guys can look at that. Talks about a lot of things, a lot of good information. And went through agreement, put our, agreed to appoint our attorney for, on a meeting basis. And we went through a whole bunch of policies and procedures, and there was one that we had a change in, the rest we just re-approved, we had made no changes. And then the board also went through and signed up on code ethics and epithism and conflict of interest. And that was our board meeting. Then after that, we had a regular meeting, went through the process of acceptance. We did have Janet Brinkes retired after 42 years of service out there. We've had a lot of, quite a few, a lot of years of service that are going to retirement now.
Did you say 42?
42.
Wow.
Then we just basically did a follow-up on what I talked about with Head Start, and then we did approve a community service block grant of $228,998, that for us. And that was basically the end of that. Then on Friday, went to Cherokee, there was a question, it was gonna be enough for a form, but we did. One of the things that we did talk about was that beginning March 1st, we did approve this, that kids that are over, pay over 30 days, and this is kinda came about the fact that we've had such a high client count now, so any kids that are over 30 days, we're gonna drop the rate back to 150, compared to what it has been in the past. And so that'll be a savings for people that have kids up there a long time. We had some discussion on changing their policies and procedures. We tabled them for this time because with short notice on that. We did take one of our cars out of the system, it had an accident with a deer, and basically towed it out, so, and we had an average of nine for the month, and of those nine, we have two were from the VIA, so, busy, busy up there. And that was my week.
Thursday had a, our monthly meeting at Rolling Hills, it was very interesting, meaningful, and important meeting. One of the first items we talked about was the ID waiver waiting list, where DHS is putting their, putting up a waiting list and asking the regions to fund those people. We have gotten any opinions from two different attorneys. One is Gary Jones, who basically is an expert in mental health, and he said that the law specifically says that you're not required to fund this. And also Roger Saylor, who's the Crawford County Attorney, concurred with that opinion. So we have two attorneys' opinions saying that, hey, just because DHS is telling us to take people off their waiting list, we don't have to do it. And then the discussion ensued, well, it's kind of our job to take care of people. What we did is we voted not to fund any of these people at this time, and we're going to have a, we appointed a committee to do a study on it. And another reason is, the legislation is in session now, and some things could change due to legislation. There was a suggestion that we just go right to DHS and say, wait a minute, we know what you're doing, you're supposed to be taking care of these ID people, and you're not, so you have waiting lists, so you're placing that burden on us, where it's your responsibility, we're not gonna do it. Don recommended that we not do that, because then they would definitely get legislation changed, so that there'd be no choice involved. So we'll see how that ends up. Another thing is, that's looking good, is House File 91, it's the mental health advocate situation. As it is now, mental health advocates work under the directions of the courts. They are funded by the county. Basically, it's a gravy train for a couple of individuals who are really racking up a lot of time and mileage and everything else. We ask them where you're spending the time, and they says, well, we can't tell you, and it's none of your business. We say, but we're funding it, because, yeah, but we're working for the courts, you're just paying for it. Not a very good situation at all legislatively. I feel like that situation's gonna end. We went over the budget, the budget is remained unchanged, well, I shouldn't say unchanged, the total budget amount is the same as what we have at $35 or $6 per capita. Crisis stabilization, had quite a discussion about that. There were sheriffs from three counties there, from Calhoun, Sack County Sheriff was there, as was Doug Bass, as was Ken Pangry. They all stood up and gave a shout out about how important crisis stabilization would be, while the counties is taking people right now to Clorinda, which is gonna close, but that's very expensive. It sure would be nice and economical to have a crisis stabilization. We have, Rolling Hills put out an RFP, asking people to bid on this, to suggest how they would like to handle it. Plains was there, Patrick was there with his proposal in hand, which he wanted to present to us, but we said, but the closing gate was the end of the month. And so through a lot of discussion, I was, I was told during the meeting that Mallard View was not interested, which surprised me a little bit. But through the discussion, we ended up getting the final date for submission for RFPs to provide crisis stabilization, extend it until the close of business Friday, March 6th. And I'll have more of that in a little bit. So on March 6th, we're going to look at the proposals and hopefully decide who to go with for crisis stabilization. So that was my meeting on Thursday. Follow-up on that meeting on Friday, I called Sherry Kitt and met with her and Dana concerning crisis stabilization, and I found out that they are quite interested in providing this, that they did have some good ideas. They have some work to do on it, a lot of work to do on it. And hopefully this March 6th date will help them out, and they'll have a good proposal to put out. In addition to providing the crisis stabilization, I know that they're also planning on having some other services involved for people that, maybe crisis stabilization is only supposed to be a short period of time, for a week or less, but they've got some really good ideas, I just hope they can pull it together fast enough to have a good proposal to us, because they have to be to Don by close of business March 6th, and we're gonna have our next meeting March 10th to select the, someone to do crisis stabilization. So anyhow, that went pretty good, I think, and glad to have Mallard View on board on I'm gonna back up on one other thing that I brought to the attention, and I had Don add this to our agenda there. Bill Heckroth had sent in a thing, proposed fiscal year 17 and onward solution, and it had to do with mental health. One thing that was not mentioned on that was the fact that counties will be capped at their 1996 cap at the dollar level. And what this would do, for example, for our region, is some counties, now you have Buena Vista, for example, they would be capped at $32.55, that's what their contribution is there. So all the other counties could be paying substantially more, and in fact, more than, also more because they'll be making up for the lesser contribution by counties such as Buena Vista, and there's, and they aren't the only county in our district that would be doing that, they're the most extreme example. So what I, why I brought this up for discussion, is I thought it would be a good idea for our board to contact Bill Heckroth. Well, actually, he asked that we put these proposals on to Jamie Cashman, and I do intend on, I will send Jamie Cashman, and I'm not saying, hey, that needs to be changed. The whole idea of the mental health is to have everybody on the same playing field. And there is a conversion time when they get some equalization money, that would dam. And I, everybody in our, at the Rolling Hills meeting was in favor of that. Is there any, I wanted to bring attention to the board before I send the email, and as soon as I got this, I wanted to fire back an email right away, but I thought, well, first I wanna hear what the Rolling Hills says, and this morning I'd like to hear if there's any comments from us. But that's what I feel, because it will up the part that we spend if other people are head back in their contributions, and yet the services are gonna be the same in the entire region. And actually, even the counties who are, who benefit from this are saying, yeah, that's wrong, we shall be paying the same. So.
So do you even agree with that?
Yes.
The whole process of this was all equality.
Absolutely.
And they're going, stepping backward and backfelling from it.
Do we want five voices, or do you want one congruent voice on that?
I would say the more voices, the better.
Okay. What's the Senate file?
Why don't you put all of our names on it in the email?
Yeah. Well, that's just what I was asking, but he thinks.
It's up to you. I, however you want me to handle.
I don't know.
I definitely feel we should respond.
Definitely.
I would be glad to respond myself, and then each of you respond so they get filed, or to, if you think it's better, I could respond on behalf of the entire board. If I have your permission, I'd be glad to do it either way.
I'd say if we put all our names on it, you do it, and just have a motion to the fact that we're all on the same.
Can he do it, send it to us, and then we can forward it to Bill?
We're taking action.
I would, I would.
That's an open record.
I can do that. It's, basically, it's for informational purposes, to Jamie, to consider.
Do it one at a time.
Okay. I'll plan on sending one of myself, and then, then I can get it done right away, and each of you can do the same. And if you want the link for it, it's in, look at Bill Heckroth's last.
Legislative.
His last legislative report.
Is it Bill's, or would it be from Rachel?
Probably from Bill.
This is from Bill Heckroth.
It is, okay.
Once you send us a copy, it's what you sent, too, so we know what we're looking at.
Okay, I will carbon copy all of you on my response.
Yeah, that'll work.
Yeah.
Then you can have a thing, because then you can get the terminology of the 1996 cap, and they all.
Right. That's the whole thing, we're all doing the same thing. You know, that's the, that's the thing that concerns me.
And that's why I put all our names on save one. Okay.
But if he sends.
We can't, we can't forward that?
I'll send a carbon copy to our auditor, and Courtney will forward it to you.
Okay. Then we can do that.
Yeah.
There you go.
Got one across the line.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll be glad to do that. We'll do that this afternoon, yeah. Okay, and that was, so, that was my meetings on Thursday, and also Friday with Mallard View, and I hope that comes to fruition. Saturday, I attended the legislative forum, and also attended a breakfast this morning with several people, including Senator Segalbar, and on this gas tax keeps getting brought up, and it's passed, that's where we are today. I think it behooves us to spend it wisely, and I think it would be an excellent idea if our county engineer, and we would earmark that money, so two years from now, a year from now, we can say, this is what Carroll County spent the gas tax on. Because people are gonna ask, and they should, ask for accountability, and we, I wanna say, well, okay, we got 300, whatever, we get 1,000 on that.
736, I think.
Yeah, 700. And, yeah, 735,000, I think it is, or 36, anyhow, this is what we got, chump, 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 this is where we spent it. And I think supervisors are directly accountable to that. The engineer's gonna make recommendations, but he's our employee. So I'm gonna talk to Dave about that. I think if we get on board right now, we can be very accountable on how that money is spent.
It's a good idea.
And I also am gonna suggest that all the engineers in the state do that. And here's the reason why. Because I think the DOT needs to do it. And we need to set a good example for the DOT. I would, I think the DOT should know advanced, they should be able to tell us where they're spending theirs, so it doesn't go down.
Actually, Dave and I had some, like a hungry canyon's on Friday, and we had some discussion about the money that's coming in. And this is something that we're gonna have to look at through this year. I mean, we really don't have the hard numbers yet, we probably will end up doing budget amendment to put that, those funds in there. So Dave and I, we've had a, we had a lot of discussion on Friday, going down to Hungry Canyon.
How are those funds gonna trickle in or come in, monthly, semi-annually?
Dave, the way Dave talked, our first payment probably won't come in until the first, latter part of April, or first part of May. It's gonna come in in April months. It's not all gonna come as one chunk. It comes in as they basically collect it. But it's gonna take some time, you know, it goes into effect March 1st. But like he said, it'll probably be toward the end of April, or May, till we get the first payment.
Well, hopefully, when they send a check out, they identify what is the additional accounts.
Yeah, and just not throw it with what's already coming.
Yes.
Yeah, why would it be any different than how it's coming out?
That's what I was gonna say, why should it be any different?
It, what, it's just getting started.
Timely, getting.
Time to get through, so they get it collected, and they get through Treasury and get broke through.
Yeah. But won't it all come together, eventually?
I would guess.
So how do, so how do you know what is going to be the ten percent?
If that will be defined.
Yeah, that money should be segregated out, and so we know.
Even if they, you know, this, you know.
Because our check now varies.
Sure.
The gas tax was collected.
Ebs and flows.
And it'll go out, but how much of the increase is, can be associated with that? Perhaps we could do it, because we know what percentage, what the gas tax is, and so if it's increased forty-four percent, forty-four percent of that would be.
Be, yeah, you can, we can probably do that here.
I think we could.
Yeah. Pretty darn, pretty close, anyway.
If they can't, we can cover it both. Okay. All right, and then finally, we got the month's January thirty-first auditor's balance, and this brought something to mind. We've been talking about the budget, and we've recognized the fact that, well, we have a budget hearing here next week, and talking about mental health and spending of our reserves, and the mental health reserves, next year, we're going to have to put a little bit in for mental health, and the year after that, we're going to have a substantial amount. We have a million dollars of local option sales tax, fifty of that's going to go to conservation as a loan. We're going to be getting loan money back from Iowa corn processors. If we plan ahead and are very frugal with our local option sales tax, I would hope that we could build that up to a reasonable amount, so that in FY eighteen, the local option coming in would be about a month to carry the mental health that we're going to have used up, thereby not hitting our taxpayers with a huge increase on one year. And we need to think about doing that now, and I'm just planting a seed for thought, that, that a thought is to use our local option in eighteen for tax relief, so that we don't have to increase the property taxes by a huge amount. We probably will somewhat, but maybe we'll hit them with a little ripple rather than a huge wave. So just food for thought, not asking to have any decision made, it was an idea I had, I think it has a lot of merit, I think it'd be very beneficial. In the past, we have taken some local option tax and put it into, those like the general supplemental, as a direct property tax savings. So let's keep that in mind as we move forward here, and hopefully, it would be a heck of a good service for our, our taxpayers. Okay, that's my idea.
Good point.
And those are my committee reports. So are there any questions?
Thanks, Neil.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, I did, sorry. I was just trying to think that one through. You're not looking for a decision today?
No.
Two quick questions, House File Ninety-One on the mental health advocates, I think I saw where ISAC is in support of that.
Absolutely.
Do you agree?
Yes.
And then the other one was, with your board meeting on Thursday, was there any discussion about block granting Plains?
Yes, very brief. We talked about our budget, and I brought that up. I said, I think we should talk about fee for service, as opposed to block granting. Block granting, maybe it's okay to get these established, but fee for service, I think, would be a very good way to go. That was about the end of the conversation, I couldn't get any support on that. And I will say, on the crisis stabilization, I knew the Crawford County, Cecil was there, he kind of wanted, he thought, well, seeing Patrick seems to, you have this jump on some of these programs and everything, like this crisis stabilization, and it bothered me a little bit, because I was kind of seeing the same thing. But I could see it because of my relationship with Patrick, I'll just put it that way, but this is an outside, third-party opinion. So maybe in order to get that done, I would have to be much better prepared than to say, we need to shift from block grant to fee for service, because I would, we would have to break it out and say, these are the specific services that we should shift or take bids on fee for services. After I'd made that comment and got no support, I thought, well, in order to get support, we're going to have to do a little more homework and digging, and be more specific, rather than just say, got a general idea, folks, what do you think about it? I think that's a good idea, but let's move on. So I did bring that up, Mark, and I feel, in order for it to get traction, we have to come up with more specific examples.
Had that ever been brought up before?
Uh, not at the Plains area. In this boardroom, it had been brought up, and Mark has spoke favorably of it.
Right.
And we all have, I think.
Yeah.
But, but not at the Plains area, so.
At the Rolling Hills.
Rolling Hills.
Rolling Hills, not, not the Rolling Hills.
So, so, yeah, maybe they're, they're holding back simply because.
They can't get their head around it, perhaps.
Yeah, yeah, they're.
It is, it's, it's a very complex issue, because when they're doing the block grant, it includes so many things, but there are many segments of that that could be taken out of the block grant, and done on a fee for service, I think.
I had some discussion with Cecil on Friday also, and then kind of give him a little history about what went on with some of the things with, with Plains, and, and kind of had gone on prior to that, and just kind of give him a heads up on the history of it, and he explained our points of view from our, from our board.
What kind of reaction you get from Patrick?
Um, none, he just, he just listened, and got no reaction from him, because I got no reaction from anybody else. I think a couple of the people would have said, let's look into it, he would have had a comment, but I don't think my general idea got enough traction to even get a reaction on Patrick. Okay.
Thanks, Neil.
Thank you, Neil.
Any other questions?
Okay, Friday, had a Hungry Canyons meeting down in Beebe Town, went down with Dave, and probably the big topic of discussion there is just some of the new, we've got a new pilot project going, as far as drilling and boring, with some of the deeper headcuts, some, some of the structures, by the bridges. What they're looking at is anywhere where there's a twenty to fifty-foot drop-off in some, in the rust soils, and what they're, they're contracting with a gentleman out of Council Bluffs to do directional drilling, just like the bore lines, or telephone lines, and fiber optic and that. And what they're doing is they're putting in like a six or eight-inch pipe at the top of the, at the top of the cut, and then putting a, a dike above it, feeding it down through a tube, a six or eight-inch tube, and they'll go to, up to three hundred feet, and it destabilized that gully, so that it doesn't collapse off and impair bridges or any box culverts. They've done nine projects so far, and the average of the nine projects they've done, they're all down in southwest Iowa, and like I said, it's all in the rust soils, it has to be done in the rust soils to do that boring. Because basically what they do is they drill and bore through it, and then they pull a pipe back through when they pull the boring machine back. And it's kind of interesting, they showed a video of how they do it, it's pretty slick the way it's done, but it's, they're just on a, a pilot program right now. They're looking at NRCS putting together some specs to continue on with it, and these, these pilot projects were just experimental, to see if it'll actually work. They've had one out of the nine fail so far, but when they did it, the first ones they put in, they used PVC pipe, and they used the Bella housing on them, and they pulled apart. Now what they're using is continuous, it's just like a corrugated, or a smooth tile, and it's all one piece, and they're pulling it through. So it's kind of a learning process, but it's, it's going to do a lot of, give it as far as protecting bridges and box culverts.
But you got to have the right soil type for it.
Yeah, it, it won't work in the soil types that we have here. We've got Marshall and Clarion soils, it's got to be a rust soil, otherwise it won't seal around the actual pipe.
It's got more clay in it?
Yeah, we've got more clay, and ours won't seal up tight enough, we're rust soils, the soil structure, it'll seal around it. So that's basically, they're working with that. Talked a little bit, we'll get together, they put together the nominating committee for the next year for executive board, Bernie Bolton from Potawatomi County, and Tom Rowley, Rowley's engineer from Plinac County, who nominated them for the nominating committee for this fall. Talked a little bit about the state and federal funding. Currently, we have three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars of state funding, and then the federal funds, we have four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. There is three people going to DC to check on the federal funding. We haven't done, gotten anywhere on the federal funding in the last two years, it's state constant at four hundred thousand. So we're going to go there and try and get something put together, and see if we can get more funding out of that. We've worked with NRCS in the past, because of the earmarks, we can't get any funding through, and so we're looking at different avenues, if we could work with NRCS or some of the other organizations to get some funding as far as the projects. The other thing, Paul Osman from Crawford County was there, and basically his comments were, is we need to focus more on the transportation, transportation side of it, and protecting bridges and that. The whole focus of Hungry Canyons is stream bed stabilization, and we've done a lot of projects in conjunction with bridges and that, we've done some that weren't, and were, his comments were, we need to focus more towards transportation side and protecting bridges and box culverts. After that meeting, we got together, we had, scoring committee got together, and I'm on that scoring committee, we approved six projects, and I'll just pass this list around, there's three up here that we approved, and three down here that we approved, and they're basically all small projects at this point. And then after that meeting, we had a Lust Hills committee meeting, I was just appointed to that board, Dan went off of that board, so I took his position, and ties in with the Hungry Canyons, it's at the same place every time, so. In that one, we went through the treasurer's report, we went through the audit, and I'll just pass that audit around. We had election of the executive committee, Bernie Bolton is currently the president, and John Hersberg is the vice president, and treasurer is Dwayne McFadden from Cass County, so we kept the same slate there for the executive committee. Let's see what else here. And that's pretty much it for Lust Hills. And then on Saturday, had the legislative forum, and it was kind of interesting, the main topics were the gas tax there, and also the mental health. One comment that I thought was very pertinent to the mental health side of it, and, and it was made by one of the people out there, is the, you know, the big focus on mental health right now is the money aspect of it, and the one comment that was made there is that we need to look out for the standard of, and come up with a standard of quality for the care of the mental health, and that's very good. I mean, I've kind of issued that statement before, and, you know, this is one of those things with mental health, as we go into this, down the line I see waiting list, and that's not a standard of quality that we want to be dealt to, I think we need to keep that standard of quality care for mental health clients, it's very important, it's not all about the money. And then on Saturday evening, at the Cattlemen's Bank with Auburn Arcadia, I think they had very good turnout for that, about nine hundred people that, Saturday night. And also, when I was down in Hungry Canyons the other, last Friday, I met with one of the Crawford County supervisors, and we talked a little bit about the UTV licenses. Crawford County has put together a resolution, and it's on a county-by-county basis, and I need to, I'm going to do a little more homework on this, I want to visit with Jerry Martin, she's the auditor from Crawford County. They put a resolution together, and I've had several comments from people in the public about the licensing of UTV vehicles. And visiting with Cecil the other day from Crawford County, basically what they did is put a resolution together, and they had the public hearings to approve it, and the license that they put on them is a twenty-five-dollar license, but they do have to have the turning signals and everything on the UTV, and I think it's something that would be worth looking into, and I'll do a little more homework there on that this week. So I'll try and get a copy of that resolution from Jerry.
There are several counties who have those.
Yeah, Crawford just started to hear about two months ago.
You can already license a UTV?
There's only one, and I've met with a person from Olson's Outdoor Power, there's only one brand of UTBs, and it's got to have a special vehicle identification number, so there's only one brand that can be, and it's not Polaris or any of those, I forget what the name of it was, but there's only one certain one that you can actually license legally at this point.
With a VIN number?
Yeah.
Has all the term signals and everything?
Yeah.
What's the resolution allow that?
I don't know, that's what I want to do, is get a copy of that.
That'll be interesting to play with.
I'll, I'll get ahold of Jerry this week and see if I can get a copy of that resolution emailed to me.
I think Beebe County might have one, too, but there are several counties that do it, so there's a lot of resources there.
Yeah, but I'll do some more homework on that, and I'll bring that to the board meeting next week, see if I can get something back here, and that's basically all I have.
I see you're doing Lust Hills, and I showed this to you before, except Dean, of something that disappointed me, and this is in Madona County. It's a bridge that's got a Hungry Canyons thing where they've done the stabilization project to save the bridge.
Mm-hmm.
And here's the bridge. It's on Level B road, and they had to close the bridge. So they stabilized a bridge that got closed, so they didn't really accomplish too much, did they?
Let's take the sign down.
So I think that would be a pretty bad use of money, where they, there's no way to lose that road, it's Level B, get in from either side, but it's closed, and I would, if I was Hungry Canyons, I'd take that side.
Yeah, I think so.
But, so I'm just saying that sometimes, it's, it's about.
We're not hitting the mark.
And here's our deal in Manning, Iowa, we did a stabilization down there, remember that, in Manning?
Raise, raise the water, waste.
There's like day and night difference between what we did at Manning and on N-68 down there, and what happened.
Anything else? Courtney, you have anything?
Anything?
Any comments from those in attendance? Not one. Motion for adjournment.
Don't move.
Second. Got a motion and a second to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What was the radio this week?
We did a lot of.